One second, Ugware, the governor of Abia State, Dr. Alex Otte. How can I just... I heard that he was going to pip in for 10 minutes. Manam... I don't know. Ugware? No.
Oh, who's here? Ayion.
Anambra, Bueno! Bueno! Buenzo, bueno! Your Excellency, Professor Chuku Masoludo. Now, when you're not here, um... Let me stand on other existing protocols. I can imagine it could be bad. I need to reach it. I need to know what to do. I need my retirement. Because, I think I'm going to get it. What do you want? When I am okay, oh, Professor Soludo. You are going to... You are going to do it. Just a few days or a few weeks, and I'm learning from him. Like he said, I participated in a transition committee. Over a year ago, as the chairman of the Economic Transformation Subcommittee of the Abia Executive-led Transition Committee. And it was supposed to be for six weeks. I think it ran for eight weeks. And like he always said, we paid to serve. Anambra is still owing me because even my hotel bills, I paid. But then, I want to say that Alibou cannot develop without an ambra. And anyhow, you flip and dice it. Anambra must be in the lead, others will follow. Oh, you go, I should help you. The major reason that made... I'm not a politician, just like him. Maybe he's a better politician than me. The major reason I came into politics was Abah. Because as a bank MD, I saw and I see, I give somebody 1 million, he will return the money with thank you. He'll keep the thank you, just return the money. Many go on your own. And when you look at the Abah business people, a lot of them want their number. And I felt that it was time for me to come and demonstrate it in Abia State. That's why I came into politics. And I must thank Anambra's son, who is here, who gave me all the support. Yesterday was his birthday. Ahamandike Ndibu, Senator Victor Me. Thank you, Ba. When I came in 2014, he said you run this election through Abga. I came to BDP. He said they will not give you tickets. And it happened. Even though they've... Some people had bought forms and all that, he still kept the place open. And I ran the election in 2014, won it, but it's a story for another day. The reason I came here is to support my older brother, my senior, him and I are new apprentices. He is a boy. We're going to... Oh, you're old, you're a boy. So I thought I should show face here, and I'm very amazed that everybody is here. Sir, Emeka Ofo is also here. They talked about EEDC, they didn't want to call his name, he's the one. Since 2014, when I came out to contest, he will carry a lot of money and give me. So sometimes I wonder why he's giving me money, why he's supporting me. Even this 2023, he goes in and at this election. Sir I, God will bless you. You know, there's nothing that's not in Anambra. Professor Tedi Adinkalo. God bless you for the work you are doing for humanity. Eka Le Anambra, you are now doing for the rest of us. God will continue to bless you. You and I have not sat like this, but there are a lot of things you have done that helped me. The bottom line for me is that we are all one and the same people. And if you think you have fixed Anambra and you are not fixing Abia, you have failed. If Imo is not fixed, it will not work. The insecurity you have in Anambra came from Imo. And it's gone wrong, that's it. Oh, who are going to rotan manu? Yes, who are? So we need to fix the whole of the Southeast. And the most important factor in development is human beings. They want to borrow. The Indian Anambra want to borrow. So my coming here is to say I support everything he's doing, and I know that other Anambra ma, they are the Libou ma. Today, nowhere is safe. It started with northwest. Some of us warned that it will move from northwest to northeast to southeast. Our people say in those days, no! Southeast is peaceful. Are we peaceful today? We're not peaceful. So we must, as in that, and it's no normal ma, Obama. We must do everything possible to bring our investments back home. I'm from a big governor here. Yes, I was with him a few days ago and is setting up an industry in Abia. And just like your governor, I also ordered my own Inosun. And in my parade, it was an Inosun Land Rover that I used, made in a week. I've not paid for the Land Rover, the man gave him free of charge. Because in my previous life, I gave him money to support his business. I've always supported our people, and I'll keep supporting our people. So, oh, you could not hear the Anambra, and you now have leftover, come to Abia. Because you can be sure that I will support you. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for honoring my senior brother. Thank you very much for being who you are and continue to be who you are. Ayion, thank you very much. I would just ask for one minute. Silence. Maybe we need to stand up to, for the soul of Senator Anyo Kumpo, who passed on. May Senator Anyo Kumpo's soul and the soul of other faithful departed continue to rest in the bosom of the Lord. Now, why I recognize the place we sit at? Why I recognize Any is that he was my senior brother. He was in the same secondary school with me. And he was the godfather of my daughter. And in this politics, you know, if you are coming from where where I was coming from, you need somebody to help you avoid the land mines. He did that. Even in this election, even on sickbed, he sent me money. So I have to honor him, continue to honor good men. Thank you very much, God bless you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ugware. I deeply, deeply appreciate. Put your hands together for Mr. Dongo. Anambra Bueno! Anambra Bueno! Anambra Zono! Anambra Kachano! Um, Mr. Chairman, you were in there? Were in there? You're not there, are you? None. And thank you very much. Distinguished senators, um, members of the House of Rep... Former deputy governor, members of the House of Reps, former and current... Oh, Awonani Ete, former governor of Anambra State. Former governor of Anambra State. But I point to you. Many, any, any, I'm... I got it, I'm on you, I'm not. He began the road revolution, Anambra. But that, 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 that. That, 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 that. Oh, uh, oh, that, that, that. As governor, he wants to know. And the bishop, while delivering his homily. So, if I call you, I think, because, not when I turn the guy, I love by far. Yeah, Java, oh, they are bigger. Do well, see, they are trouble, they can be there. So I just want to give this testimony. Uh, thank you very much, Your Excellency. Um, the way they live, they are bad. None. They are number, they in there. Oh, you're a banana, banana, I'm an Anambra, I'm a banana, I'm a number one. So, I'm a banana, no, you're a... I'm told, I'm a, I'm a Bueno. Come on, you're a, you're a, you're a Bueno. None. Kindness of life and game, our chairman, onte. Of course, uh, I could see if I need them, I'm careful, my wife, the wife of the governor of Anambra State. Otherwise, um, uh, in a, in a, who are not, but they got one, he love, I'm an, uh, Gaga. I can never more. Okay, there? From the valley, Anambra, so let me make a presentation. Oh, that I may one year anniversary. I will a presentation. This is the month of, um, July. My comment, I'm a lion, I'm a cool, the last 18 months. Now, but I am a go 18, no, look, I'm a little bit of a... I can't, but I'm a 16, I can, no, but uh-huh, I'm an, I am a little bit of 18 months, not a 16. Oh, no, I'm even, I'm a zoo. Okay. Okay. Oh, no, I'm a... Uh-huh. Oh, we... Can I be, if I, I can ever, no, I will go, my sister. Um, distinguished senator, uh, I couldn't even. And all if I they not just is a co-opted Anambra, um, uh, man, Professor Sito Boo. Prof, on, 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 yeah? Uh-huh, uh-huh, but no. No, not Ambray's, okay? Uh, Anambra and our co-opted, uh, um, members. There are some of us who grew in our state. I'm a designer, I can... Sometimes. Can be I am, if you don't know, she for. Now Lagos, oh, that I make Lagos. It was quite a very long one. I know it a little bit, I'm at almost midnight. I went 3:00 AM. But I get, be a, 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 a. Okay. You got but I'm a banana, I'm a banana. Okay, this is, I'm a little black. Security Trust Fund Meeting for Fund Red. Oh, God! Oh, what? They are number now I beg to on, on, my interview and graciously employed me and my deputy to be the chief servant. Where say, anytime I meet qua, I can never, for employing us. Thank you very much. Okay. This guy can't be a period. I know, know. Get them, then I could if I, that, that, because if I, come on, come on, come on, I'll die, I'll die, go. I know, I'm a little bit of one minute, I why, what if I, but, uh-huh. So, this I'm a little on Lagos. Whether I'm a, I'm a because and the purpose they do. You can go, but I I know it was I see a man. Call when, whatever. That's number one, purpose. No. Boy, you were no. Who, nah? No, nah. He nah. Matter, no. Of course, no, I within Nigeria. If I, we are stronger Nigeria. I can, I'm near, in a, I'm near, many, similar, many, for you. Oh, Eagle, oh, if I don't have the Nigeria's coat of arms. I can write a whole lot about the Eagle, Eagle personality and all of that. But Eagle was symbol, if I got off arms, he got for a nice sim. So he, Nigeria, he required oh. I can, yeah. Come on. Yeah. Awesome, the bar. They're poor, I'm a boom, I'm a winner. Man, I allow allow on my name, I see, I call, I'm the bar, in a, let them, the bar, in, I'm a leader, I'm on a matter, Nandi, Bina, Befah, who never, you are both, who never respect you. More, more, name, where, a livable and prosperous homeland. Oh, nah, I know, where I see, if I swear, you are saying, nah, they matter, no. No, I don't so, no, I can't, I didn't, I know, I'm a the bar. No, where I see. Not but now the Jews. Oh, why they claim to be the African Jews, oh, yeah. Good. We're being a core, Jerome, we are, we're not, he's a gamer, no. On a, we're a male, if I of who can see, I'm football, cause I see, I'm a boy, I'm a, cause I see, I'm a boy, top. Awesome. So I say, ah, can you Oh, where is ever on a way for the na come on, on a at all, see you in a camera on the. But I am. Well. After. Oh, we have suffered the Holocaust, the persecution of the Jews. Actually. After. To build. That will be as prosperous as any. In the. Of. If I. Like. Also, now, ah, but so you were number. What? Number. Them. In the. The Jew. Yeah. Wait on my semi desert. To become one of the most prosperous spots of anywhere else in the world today. Or take the determination, or take the resolve, or take the homeland consciousness. That a people decided to take their destiny in their hands. We decide there. No, yeah, um. Oh, one day, the cocker, one day, Tony, whoa, yeah. Uh, get one subway, uh, get up here, um. Oh, Zemena. Also, no, no, cha, same, oh, shut up, oh, movie, yeah, mono. Oh, no, cha, yeah, well, more than London, um, but so, yeah, the. Yeah, joy, yeah, man, and they are the no two on each other. But. Okay. No, you not say, shut up, yeah, movie, yeah, more. So. So, if I did, they are part of, um, the by. Like, we're being a cool ball. Get my, oh, my, the Jew wants, I decide there. To build their home. Any Jew, it actually, we're anywhere in the world, on a Israel, on a beer. When I join the by. Um, but can do, um, where, um, the by, get, go near. Well, I'll say, ah, pass away, he were in number. But he get people to do better. Like. Uh, 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 I go. Oh, no, cha, see, I shut up, yeah, movie, yeah, more, yeah, for, yeah, now, London, um, but so. Yes. You know, to Nigeria, I did. I want to suggest, and I want to say it very funny. I'm not coming, the name, the, eh, eh, the call is a live, ah, nah, nah, then, nah. Ah, no, my sweet, ah, bye, no, but. When I say, ah, no, no, I, ah, give ah, um, 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 um. Actually. Chuku, no, no, any way. I'm, I'm very spiritual about this. And I'll tell you why. My motivation for applying for this job. Now, Chuku, no, no, any way. Eh, no mistake. He mind, the war. Oh, my, no mistake. He mind, the Anambra. Oh, che, cha, eh, Benny, nah. Oh, my, I, oh, yeah, Tanzania. More, oh, yeah, Jamaica. Oh, my. Or American, or this, or that. Of, like, Benny, nah. We decide of all. Eh, ba, okay, yeah, but. But I take it seriously, now, they. Now, each of. And which of us, but, okay, the. To leave that place better than you met it. Wouldn't go, so, need. Eh, my. Okay. But. But I'm. The boss. But I. In a bed, oh, my, I'm. Oh, boy. But I. So, those are. Boom. Eh. You said. I've thought about. Why the whole. Or the why. Okay, my, this. Well, what that, ah? Why? Uh. And now. Man. Man, the central message, and I. Bonna. And that. And that is a bed. Okay. Oh, now. Where questions, doing well. Oh, the, um, come for. But, okay, yeah. I will give it out there, so, oh, yeah, where questions, where suggestions, oh, get me, and so on. Or that way. But if I. Like I said, oh, really, the one, nah. And no, no, oh, but I'm really for guy, eh, me, who, oh, no, I'm really for guy, look. To make Anambra livable and prosperous. Our mission, bona, then, eh, clear, clear, eh, clear, man. I, bon, they, Anambra. And I'm really, when he, no, get, where, he, Jima, Anambra, oh, probably the number one destination, rather than being a departure lounge. Yeah, the message, I, eh, eh, pass on, and now, everybody. Man, they are not ever, oh, no, I'm really for get me. Our liaison offices, now Lagos, and Abuja here. Will be reworking them. I'm a liaison office, then, um, uh, Asokoro. Are supposed to be residents, eventually out. But I, in a fair, those here, I will, I will, but a liaison office and residence. Mo, I get me, oh, they, eh, for, like, functional office, that once in a while, mo, I got, yeah, um, yeah, I, eh, where, open day. Oh, when, eh, totally, for governor, oh, when, totally, either one or two days, a very office, not ever, oh, yeah, totally, for, yeah, for, yeah, but, was here. We're going to do it. The same thing, now Lagos. I, not it, from time to time, yeah, eh, open day, two days, not the my back, chief, once, ah, I will be office. It's all from, eh, yeah, I have. The same thing, because the. Strategic partnerships, and I am glad. Now, oh, the chairman, now, in the, chairman of this event, uh, oh, anybody, nah, the, oh, could, eh, sleep. About strategic partnerships. January last year. And when, I think, dinner, with all the members of the National Assembly. Every, Chukuzo, you were there. And, uh, my, this is a distinguished, uh, sir, I, um, was also there. We had dinner in my house, here, now, Abuja. And also. Kinda, ah, quite a. Another. I'm proposing that another one, would, uh, we should be having similar meetings, literally, at least, maybe. Maybe, uh, every quarter, or minimum, uh, three times in a year, and especially as in pre. Yeah. Because, and, uh, I'm repeating what I said to the National Assembly, the day we met. Even that. But, nah, if I would take two hands to clap. And I. Ball, now field. And I also said it to the parties, but I, my, inaugurate the State House of Assembly. Political party, you know, the relevant, Cavu, Ki, Weso, election. After the election, we all have one project, Project Anambra. And there is only one ball in the field, and the goal of everybody, but to score the goal. And now, for me, people remember National Assembly, there is only one. There is only. And that. Now, for. Really, or, or fifteen trillion, twenty trillion, whatever trillion. Trillion, ah, that, map, oh, be, ah, not but trillion, not but trillion, if ever, you are on concern. How. Eh, Bonata, Anambra. That is it, that's part of the strategic partnership, and I want. The senators and mem, and the members of the House of Lords. Let's walk. Because we have only one agenda. Oh, no, I, be a lot, Abuja. I, see, now, Cabo, ah, boy. Good. When, okay. And I. I'm. I'm. If I. Here. In the back. But. Than moving emotion to get. To happen. And we are going to work towards that. I want. Uh. Um, oh, worry, bro. We have a project ongoing there. Already, as we speak. The. Um, about. Uh, that exists, we just. They go, uh, as well, then. The pipeline, I just. I was there. Cancel meeting, and I. Spending close to twenty billion on federal roads, now, Anambra. And that shouldn't be. We got to change the narrative, we have to change the way that it works. And I think, working with the members of the National Assembly, and especially. My call. Or the. In the. Minister of War. Those roads. I am. Because, eh, my, why, yeah. They go, and they come, ah, my, ah. It's not appropriated, the whole budget. For the entire country. So he can speak from here to Jericho. Now, if you, eh, go, but now, if you, eh, go. Meanwhile, every day, the mother, yeah, 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 just, eh, na, photo. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay, nah, ban, oh, so, man, okay, oh, federal, um, 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 state, reform, ah, oh, salute, oh, no, so, ah, joy, eh. But he not, eh, eh, ba, okay, eh, ah, no, I, yeah. My, cool, boss, oh, set, yeah. We wait up, but, nah, ah, no, I, yeah, look, oh. Oh, we're wrong, tal, oh, oh, we're wrong, ke, oh, oh, um, gee, ju, ju, la, can, eh, bua, now, we're all back home. And I will address one or two, three things. I settle out in terms of making this state, Kabul, the most livable and prosperous state. I get it, no, good, nah. Well, I, yeah, cha. Yeah. The if I, eh, nah, eh, Kobo. Get that, why, eh, get, Sima, Anambra, Kabul, the destination, rather than a departure lounge.
Did they all battle Anambra? With his whole team? With rocket launchers, with AK-47, Bukalo FIFA. Also, Anambra vigilante strike force that brought him and his team down. And so on. So, but we are going to the next level now. Why, but Alunuga Chopotana, most communities, their vigilante teams were totally compromised. And taken over by these guys. And so, I couldn't operate with those ones. Because we didn't trust them. So, I bidle go do with the state's strike force. Now that we can trust that team now. And those people man. Farmer. Nandia. Bonde maife famama, or Makaliaife famama. Now, with that group gone, we're going to the local government. And where the next phase I get out to drill down to the communities, community vigilantes. And we're going to be strengthening this in the coming weeks and months. We are determined, the moment we put this in place over the coming weeks, we're going to focus very aggressively on opening up Anambra and ending the sit at home, once and for all. We're going to end it. We're going to end it. Because what had happened, nobuna, had the sun actually, this is at ona chondina actually. But now, I think the reverse is becoming the case. On our infrastructure and economic transformation, quite a bit of it has been laid out here. It's a huge agenda. Anambra road crisis, infrastructure crisis, so Gaibata. And we promised in that number that we were going to declare state of emergency on roads. And yes, that we have declared. And 301 kilometers, that didn't include the contracts that were just awarded recently. And we're still coming, and we're still coming, and we're still coming. They promised 100 kilometer extra, we're going to be doing much, much more than that. And because our target is to be able to hit at least 500 or so kilometers of road. And we've declared this, and moving very massively. In all the local governments of Anambra State simultaneously, and delivering quality roads. At least, onwa egosi guy, not a possible yellow quality road. Makona we ma say, eh, nankar dekan ken giga. Makonke, yeah, now the benchmark, yeah, good quality road, na Anambra. Uh huh, and ken giga kadiya. Man, onwa, if I na lookita, munkega, anokali ken giga. But now, you know, only be a far, add ya nankar olalobo. Uh huh, muta ifa nankendi melame, ayamutago from Mkiya, now Josephi Kailo, Mke, Megane, kega topu na Kya. But thank you very much for laying that foundation. Makongo ndeana law two years or wash it off. We've declared that emergency, but in all the other sectors, be it agriculture, be it industrialization, you've seen something on your tables. Omalifono fuga makam pharmaceutical industrial park. The oba drug market, that will be the largest in West Africa, or is it in Africa? The pharmaceutical park, that will be in Oboji. And we are also, we have acquired hectares of land, thousands of hectares of land. Ebagu allo the next industrial cities. Two main cities, or three of them, will be emerging very soon. Three. That is about 3.5 hectares, or 3,500 hectares of Fonzon, Okweba. Okwea? Uh huh, ogamaka 3,500, that is going to the what is called the New Oka. And then, we're targeting about 7,000 hectares for the industrial city, but already 3,500 in the bank. We've already acquired 106 hectares of land, or what I call the UU cities. The Ukulu, um, axes, where each of them has given us 53 hectares of land. That's where we're going to be having the export processing zone, the export emporium, and with an agenda to have the Africa's largest shopping mall. Yes. That will be in that axis, as it were. And then the New Oka, and the Ife Dabian, Oka will be a destination. Oka will be a true capital. Oka ma wasn't just a glorified village. And I bidle hereby signaling that, for the first time in 32 years of the creation of Anambra State, that there will be a governor's lodge and a government house in Oka. And by early next year, probably before March next year, we'll be able to move into the new governor's lodge and the new government house. We're going in all facets, but I will tell you something very important. Because many of us here, Anna say, not ono, not ono, not ono. Eh, achomime invest, kedebeke me invest, we're taking two, three steps. First, we're acquiring the lands and putting them in our land bank. So, if ya chong gigi, marveling, and we planned it all out. Ebagu allo estates. So far, we just signed up, how many, how many persons have, how many estate developers have we signed? Seven. Seven. We have signed on seven estate developers, new estate developers, and work is ongoing. Anambra ga dije. And what I'm trying to say to you, Makandina cho to make investment, when we acquire these lands, Ija lobya, ayamalungke chole me. Once you were proof of funds. Because some na, beasewana chole lungka, you see, I go, see, they had 100 hectares. Before, na cho we, one year, na, yes, you of oh, oh, waliye jide. Ne, che, ome belo ke, goba nongka, o, owa na leva ne. Ah, osa oni, che, ome, ne na mayva, nopepe ne. Ne ma, ne ma, no, 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 not the game, ifa abo the game. So, and I'm okay, ma ifa, ifa na ma ifa. Opota, so, na fa na cho, and ya na cho, or negative 50 hectares. A more ona, land the bar Number's own platinum, or broad diamond, no platinum. Galand, ana, Anambra. Because I'm not in way, peempe. Our land area, they encumbered by flooding and by erosion. I'm with second smallest landmass after Lagos. But Lagos is expanding by reclaiming the lagoons and the Atlantic. Anambra is shrinking because of gully erosion and flooding. So, the little farm, Ujelobya, Abaya, it ready to invest, who give you. Man, obone, yege, yege, hogu, de, jide. I got alo pa ge, new, yege ready. Bo, well, ifa nebun, yes, I get woro pe, new, yege ready to develop. Komwen de no, no, they specializing. Ne wokati, wokati oye me fence, rapya. Ne che ko, me appreciate. Mba, that era is gone. Anambra, this is the time to come in. You are future, yesterday and today, bo here and elsewhere, bonna. Tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, and the future belongs down there. And I will tell you this, the next axis of prosperity that will be sustainable over the long term, umbada bayya. Owen de nebunisi, uh, for, for na, na fa na, that even ne. The next axis of prosperity, in a Lagos, etwade. A more amande full about cities that will submerge or something, something under. A more amande full, yeah? The analysis of the cities of the world, and debefanaga, and so on. With the second Niger Bridge completed, and with the future, it's near the rail lines. And I want to pray and hope that the governors, I'm working at the southeast, that is quite an upbeat, I'm quite upbeat about tomorrow, of the southeast. Where the crop of governors, I'm working at that. That if we collaborate together and coordinate together, the southeast will sing a new song. The southeast will sing a new song. That will be a stampede. Nde mea kita, nde na bata kita. And I want to say this. I na say ebia to invest in the southeast, it's not, omo roji de me favor. Ebia me invest, they may invest for me. You're not doing me a favor. Investing there is in your own best interest. Over the next two decades, three decades, four decades, being there, nde mea today, what is called the first mover advantages. Nde kega beasi letter. Ya na beasi, na baguenu, with the, nde, no du go, the one, bo, no de. Or they can, nde bela buja is. Bo, nde bela buja, je golose ana, mebadi na na manam, uh, Maitama, Sokoro, ma, Usetu, mbuefa bo sofya. Nde na beasi tata, nde na sene ba bofya mba. When I beasi, 20 years later, onwa ife men. Etu akoge, se dena bye. Etu akoge, si mena bye. And so, when I say it, I'm saying, come. Ga ido zee bechine ken yelaie, ah, na ngivanka, go yelaie, na denso. Ga ido zee, kandiozo megane, yaba na bye. In your own best interest. Omo roji de me nyelo. Mungwe bu nyegba o. Apa Anambra? Eh, bu nyegom? Eh, gata go? Uh huh. Alonome, ben ne nugu, aso niibo, aso niibo. Alonben in the 90s. Ne nugu, ne ba kan gebi, I retire, die. And I built it as such. Eh, nugu has remained, had remained my first primary residence in Nigeria. I'm, I'm a say, proudly can say, no more, the first oniibo, a more amakonyozo, who held such a high-profile office as being governor of Central Bank, finish here, makorokwa na ben ne nugu. Abu Jeba, bu guesthouse. Wasai, Iga fetala, alaro eba, wasanori akaga. Ena po, ena ju, ome, ome leave and chefu. But na Anambra, ana gom, eh, na, 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 no, so, ana lo ba gom, and I finish here, agama obonya, galosia goba no, maybe, mononwa, amorozuma, oye bu mozo, momo, oye bu yozo. Etu obuga mozo, lo goba no, maybe, obulu mozo, wey bole. But alusia goba no, maybe na Anambra. Maybe na Anambra. Because that is the place to be. That is the place to be. And I na fe ido zee Oka, and ife na loya, ifa na lo no, ifa na lo eba bo, and my way with a view, ne ba kan gebi. Yes. So, embe self-interest, for it to be what it should be. And that is the Zelaid well I mean. By name, ifa empowerment and so on and so forth, I could take you through a whole lot of things we're doing. But just recently, about two, three weeks ago, we finished distributing 670,000 seedlings, coconut and palm. And you know the economics of that? We're distributing this to about 140,000 households. And the agenda, bona, my commissioner for agriculture, a foster, is a medical doctor, Tom Farmer. Yes. He's a medical doctor, who has taken on the farm, agriculture as, um, his occupation. He's our commissioner. He has been our teacher. He taught us the economics of this palm and coconut. That a poor household, um, whether the five of them, I near for this year. In the next four years, when it starts fruiting, and as it's going on, we'll be making a minimum of what? About one, a minimum of 1.2 million, at current prices, at the prices today. God knows what the prices and so on will be there. A poor household, they have 40,000, half of 10,000 today. Will earning an average of 100,000 naira a month, or so. Next year, we are going to replicate and give to each one of those people I near another five, to make it 10. And that will remove this 140,000 households from poverty for life. That's the kind of empowerment we are doing for the poorest of the poor. I would give a 5 kg bag of rice. And, uh, uh huh, my brother, the governor of Abia, has just come. Viko, chawuni, ochet, chawno, ochet, chawno, ochet, chawno, ochet, ba viko. Ugware? No, 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 thank you very much, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Anambra kueno? Anambra muano? Ibo kueno? Uh huh. Gero nde nankar, onuga chelo, onuga jese, cho somewhere by the side, because you are blocking others. Uh huh, either you come forward in front here, so you don't block, um, don't bother, if you came with Ugware, he is safe here. I'm his bodyguard here. Ugware, you're welcome. Akam kusiloku a moment ago. I see the National Economic Council meeting. When I agree about this town hall meeting, Wesum sent earlier the address that he might stop by in the course of this event. And I want to thank you immensely, Ugware. A moment ago, Omalifengku about the future of the southeast, okwea? Ebuluna that with the crop of governors, emwe kita, and at the southeast, if we collaborate together and work together in a farm that I believe that we ought to, and which, and that we must, that will change the story, the narrative of the southeast. Okwefengku, ebay a moment ago. Ugumba, you're welcome. Ugware? Ugware, nugu Ugware? Um, we're merely elect, eh, declare, eh, we're a man, a chineka is a niibo man. Yes. Tana, eh, negide Abia, negide Abia, negide, na ma ju, organi ne me. Eh? Yes? Okay, oh, yeah, I remind him, no, I'm a transition committee. Uh, my, okay, transition committee, he actually chaired, I think, the economic, uh, 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 you know, section of the transition committee. Thank you very much, Ugware. And with you and Abia, I think, like I said, we're convinced, na chineka, bukwanani, bo man. It signals, no ge lugo. We can continue, I mean, this wandering in the wilderness. It is now time to look to the east. The sun rises from the east, bo. Man, obasi me, or deka, ome, kemen. Man, ogadema. So, if I nebun, and I want to end it this way. I am we kuboku, I am, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, to question and answer session. We're now acquiring, uh, we've got the data, the land banks, acquiring lands for various developments, we're now, no, 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 de. Also, in the Obona, the reforms, I name it, the land registry. For such that you can now perfect your mortgages, it transfer titles within. Okay. Our target, currently, each and you see of home, Imenka, each and your title and so on, used to take like months, six months, one year, whatever. It's now down to seven days, and our target is 72 hours. Our target is 72 hours. We're now implementing the GIS, they are computerizing the land registry, and soon you will be anywhere in the world, and will be able to access and verify, and so on. Eh, ma, because land is Anambra's own platinum. Land grabbing boy, big business. Bo, man, ogadema. People, three, four persons, they actually want title, not by a. Na, no. It will end. On our governance, uh, the, um, environment, I don't want to dwell much on governance and the others, but on the environment, ebak actually end. Eh, remind, nde Anambra, that our number one existential threat toward the environment, flooding and erosion. We now have a draft bill, either sent to the House of Assembly, to rescue our environment. Unyo obu na ome ifo ge me. Afugum doctor hari ebay. Ay nona befa ne benato. Ga no gida le ebay, sana, uh, gully erosion, ne pucha kalo ebanaato. Uh, uzo ke walo ebanaato no sumeji. Uh, also, ifa, vago sila ebay. Yes. Many communities are sliding. Oko, nankar, obo, uh, Amoapala, Iploria. Well, erosion everywhere. Now, oba, oba kubu bo. Bo, iké? Obata go kubu bo. We're beakoli ilona agafe. So, we are, we are not, we are not, we are not taking this very, we have been ruthless about this. Because we must rescue that city. Onisha has died, but we are going to rescue Onisha back. Today, we have opened back the waterways, back to River Niger. And now, Wangene, we reclaimed a large expanse of land around Wangene. Which people had taken over and taken, and, oh my god, and built up everywhere in a very filthy manner. But we have opened it up back to River Niger, so that drains, onabu milizo, nde ma na, won't say no Onisha. We entered Urban Boy Secondary School, and the only speech they made to us that day, they pleaded with us, they thanked us, that na, I ne me, esipwa drainage is no Onisha. That three of their students died three years ago. Because it rained, flood. Three staff, young staff of UBA, were killed by flood, Onisha, two, three years ago. Fabasalolo, bayana moto, one of them, kafanazie, obu na milizo, omo de ben milinaga. And the flood everywhere, the speed and the intensity of the flood, boom motova, boom motova, they got into a ditch and got drowned there. Onisha literally died. Unyo obu na, na lokasi fe ne, and because Onisha died, we died and then resurrected in Asaba. They died and resurrected in Asaba. Unyo obu na, they move to Asaba. I can tell you, we have it as a major project. We are going to rescue Onisha, and we are rescuing Onisha. Part of our environmental law is not just to desilk and clean up, we're rebuilding the infrastructure onisha. We're rebuilding. The towns took over the place. Now, we are peeling them, we're now raising quite an army now, we're recruiting quite some, uh, dead devil security people, whom we are going to now implant from Upi Waka to Ga Junction, to Head Bridge, to down to Ochanja and Men Market areas, all those places that these towns operate, we're now going to implant and have steady teams there to take them out any minute of the day. And meanwhile, we are rebuilding the infrastructure, the roads again. A more amande malu fegge before. When the may be fegge de? Eh? Yeah. Fegge, we are rebuilding it, the entire, uh, Zik Avenue. We're now dualizing it and making a multiple lens up to Ochanja, to Ozomagana. Get passing through Ochanja, round about, Ochanja, round about, we have a waterfall. And then, from Mo Street to Ochanja again, to Upi Waka. Then, from there, you get into, um, Potacot Street, from Potacot Street to Misselands. Then, on Creek Road, Creek Road dualized and put up all of them with their dual carriage and with, uh, street lights and so on and so forth. Creek Road then to Silas Walks up onto the express. We are doing, we've awarded them, and by this mba mba month, you will see the difference in those places. And part of our environmental law would then compel landlords even to begin to repaint their buildings once every while, specified. Make ifa tana Onisha, and then, then some of these buildings are not sozioi. We are cleaning. We are making it green, and we will turn it back again a liveable place. But while we are rescuing Onisha, we are rebuilding other places to begin to grow. Anambra ga dema. I'll put up by choice, ka uma soraya, ma soraya, Anambra ga dema. And the world wake up. But here is the big news, I mean, the thing, I close this way. What do you have to do? How do you contribute? Unyo obu na ome ifo ge me. It's not everybody that can come and make investments and build factories and so on. The other day, I opened a steel mill, a steel factory. Ebefaneme, and I manufacture rods and so on and so forth. No kuso. And it's owned predominantly by a new member of the Anambra State House of Assembly. Who went to commission it. And it's ongoing. And several others are calling me, ndika ge, yege, me, where their factories and so on and so forth. I know Christian, who did to go the commissioner for industries, he has a lineup of them, ndaina ge, me, where their factories and so on. One say na Abia to Anambra to invest. Eh, cho kan, no ba, you are be eh, Guam, ina bata na airport, um, ya bulu. Aloba ngi be eh, provider, eh, galwaya na Anambra. One say Gabia, eh, eh, goes to Anam. I forana, no, ome ife Gabia. One so forana ife Gabia. Don't worry, bulapa, ome, ebulu apa. Man, obu ra, mbusi ala ya apa, na, kete, na wa, semna, ome ife. So, that is one. The land thing you needed will give you land expeditiously. On gaige me. Number two, for your investment. Number three, we are working very hard with EEDC. And now you know, in terms of power supply, it's a very critical, we're working on security, the next is power, we are addressing infrastructure. We're working with EEDC to ensure 24-hour electricity at least to the major cities in the first instance. But now also, there is a constitutional amendment that also grants states power to license even power generating and distribution, as the case may be. Several people have indicated interest, they want to do some captive power here and captive power there. One of them was talking to me the other day, he wanted to have a meeting with EEDS in Serbia. Amalomende with EEDC. Adi ka ma lo fa, adi guan kachi ma na, yo, neba. Uh, Chairman EEDC, eh, Fabia, I connect them, they have a conversation. Anambra must have electricity. I'll say, we're all cooking, eh? Oh, we're cooking, oh, my, was you're cooking. Okay. The next one, how else can you play? You can pay your taxes, na Anambra, you know that? How many, how many of us never have an out of tax for na Anambra? Yes, I can see some hands up. Very good, very, very good, very, very good. Man, ndiaka falin renu, pe kalele, ndiaka falin ilenu. Nde ko zo, oke de me. Eh? You can. We can discuss how this can be structured. What depend, Lebi claimo to be your place of residence. Because by our constitution, you have your state of origin, and you have ebemwe libo residence, what depend, Lebi claimo. And for those of you with their companies, you can move the head office address of your company to be Anambra. You move where the head office address to be Anambra, you can then pay your personal income tax, neba, na Anambra. You move where the head office address to be Anambra, you can then pay your personal income tax never, now, Anambra. You can do something, just do something. I will leave you with the thoughts, the juice, if you want to join with them, boy, the homeland consciousness. Every day, I say, June, I joined, we, Kedifi me Tata, to make the land of Israel a prosperous and livable homeland. And that my June, the same thing. About I be a bad, believe a benign, Allah, what to, I never man, I, I pass away, was a, now, baby. He cannot join me every day, Kedife Chukujime, money, state. And what have I done today to make that place livable and prosperous? What have I done today to make that place livable and prosperous? That, to me, is a fundamental question. My one, nothing, no, cheche, hold us to account. And when they are number of fun, what? Now, every penny, unutina la enaka. Every penny, unutina la enaka, we will be able to show you a body. That is a contract within their number. Every penny, unutina la enaka, will show you in a body. I not that, and I cancel, I mean, no question and answer after addressing the media. One of the questions was about, okay, Kedife governance, I meant to reduce the cost of governance. So, well, we're not legislating for everybody because we agreed, not important for us to address the cost of governance. But the example, yeah, Fabo, for my own, I, I can talk about my own. I can talk about mine. We'll start off, now, sure, they, you, come, and Anambra, monkey, and Abia. I think they, but I'm, Abia, mine, they create a job, now, now, they are quite a community. Um, oh, my, yeah, quite, often, they, my, when they, hand woven. So that's the only textile on the southeast, all the textiles are down. More than nine, the official car governor, Bogan, innocent. Innocent. I put on, this, in the, I mean, probably like 300 and something million, this, and, uh, going, nothing, more, I believe, I believe, I'm not, I, I, I bloom point A to point B. If we don't say here we are, nobody will say there you are. I've traveled quite a bit around the world. From where any of the countries said it developed, he get, yeah, the government there, but oh, jet to buy vehicles for this and that, I'm only American government, oh, yeah, they go Toyota. Monique, um, uh, European specs, not American vehicles, that government will collapse. That government will collapse. An example, yeah, but, yeah, but, I mean, and I've said this severally. When I assumed office, if on our cost to do facility management, to clean offices and so on and so forth, was 137 million every month. We've cut that and cut it and cut it and cut it and cut it and cut it. Finally, where we are now is that Anambra State Government spends 11 million Naira every month to clean the offices. Eh, yeah, put a governor, my government, I see, yeah, yeah, go, see, yeah, go, take, go, taxi, I to give you. Eh, man, I am a man. Man, eh, yeah, see, I, who, my, get to, I guess, control that erosion, my, to, I guess, man, can, man, can, yeah, maybe, but that's what keeps us awake. We're not going to take the money I collected from the nine, yeah, K K, now, babe, to get to, eh, yeah, but, well, yeah, but, eh, yeah, but, Kalo, Kalo. No, we must account for every penny that is put in our pounds. And with us there, we ask you, trust us with your penny, and if we misuse it, hold us to account. If we misuse it, hold us to account. That is the message, I, no, no. But don't you open a long call, Gallo? What are you doing yourself? What are you doing yourself? To turn the story, to change the narrative by, oh, we're only, yeah, for a penny. Or, or cheat, or dinkar, Professor Dinkar, why? Oh, yeah, why? I can see where I go. Oh, Prof, thank you very much, thank you for coming. Anyway, when we're talking about law, security and order, uh, security, law and order. You know that as part of the response to the massive insecurity everywhere in the southeast and Anambra particularly, we set up this through Justice and Peace Commission, which Professor, uh, Odenkalo has graciously agreed to cheer, and that commission is doing an amazing job. Is doing an amazing job. Um, I think, um, the, one of their recommendations, which I've already, we've already started implementing. I think I saw a memo from the Attorney General about if I need now to equip the office and so on and so forth. What they recommended for us to establish Bureau of Missing Persons. Maybe in that, in that bureau, the list will be quite long, including Abba Simalo, my co-contestant as governorship candidate, who is just missing. And then we go to a point, oh, yeah, and, oh, me, silly, I'm, I'm just, you get on to do your thing, nobody cares, and that's gone. No, we will now care, and we will never forget, and we will never forget. So thank you very much, Prof, uh, for the work that you are doing. They have been having public hearings and so on, and many things coming out from different communities and so on and so forth. I want to say to you, dear friends, thank you for coming once more. To my brothers, I want to end with my brothers, um, whom I believe in, uh, that's in his typical way, you know, commandeered out here. I appreciate the comments that you made, I'm sure we're going to open the floor to the others. I deeply appreciate you all. Um, eh, but we took us on, my own senator, uh-huh, Senator Kim. Uh-huh, I am very excited for what you said. Everybody says, ah, Gena, Senator, uh, ona, I think, oh, leave, um, oh, no, I'm, well, no, I'm, well, even if, yeah. He is my senator. Mom, I believe, governor, we need to work together to make the place to work. We need to work together. Oh, go, but not allow, uh, street lights. I think that was, was that December or January, there about, on a gay flag, yeah, off, not never. I may invite to come and flag them off. And, oh, yeah, eh, they, me, well, but, oh, yeah, eh, then, yeah, but, I say, I'm, but, I'm, 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 oh, oh, opposite party, opposition, opposition party. The, yeah, I'm only in a mere indoors, now, I'm, I'm, come, man, so I be good. And I'm coming back to say, I, I mean, I don't just say it, I live by it, oh, no matter, madam. I will, but I'm, oh, my, the politician, mature, able, politician, I'm gonna, who, five sides of the mouth. You know, I say it as it is, and for me, what you see is what you get. I told them, I've told you here now, no football came where, and that ball project, Anambra. And that irrespective of political party, irrespective of anything, once he there, when I tell something to Anambra, call me, I will come. I put on, I, yeah, blue, now, I go, yeah, I, I, I'm, oh, yeah, blue, yeah. Yeah, blue, yeah, I'm, yeah, but, not, but, not, you know, I see, no, 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 um, oh, no, not, I think, come, oh, no, not, I think, yeah. Even no, total was here, I can, hey, oh, guy, you going, yeah, yeah, I'm, okay, my, yeah, nah, no, I'm, yeah, but. And I was there and commanded him and encouraged others to do like him. Eh, but we took us on, that is my own brand of politics. That is my own brand of politics is project, Anambra. Project, Anambra, that's nothing, matter, party for our vehicle, it will, yeah, but. Thank you very much. All the, uh, I'm a dick, uh, Gawa, I'm a dick, and Kim, I see, me, I know, um, oh, my, goes, he, me, yeah, oh, my, yeah, yeah, yeah. I am, um, oh, oh, my, uh, I traffic it, I'm overtake. Eh? So, I, I, my, my, I tell, I tell, no, no, I'll traffic, I'll, 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 but, take, yeah, Benny. Man, I'm, yeah, but, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, yeah, no, uh, okay, I'm a campaign, yeah, no, I'm, yeah, I'm, 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 yeah, Lalo.